So I normally don't read anything before reading the preamble, but it won't do you much good if I don't tell you this, Town of Chester inhabitants, that you need to tune in at 87.9 FM. So if you have that on your dial, then you'll be hearing what's going on in this town meeting. Again, that's 87.9 FM. To the inhabitants of the Town of Chester, County of Rockingham, State of New Hampshire, qualified to vote in Town Affairs, you're hereby notified to meet at the Chester Municipal Offices in said Chester on Tuesday, the 10th day of March 2020 at 7:00 AM to act on Articles 1 through 8. The polls will close at 7:00 PM. After the ballots are counted, the meeting will continue on Saturday, the 20th day of June 2020, by moderator's order, at 9:00 AM at the Chester Academy Parking Lot, where Articles 9 through 32 will be taken up at that time. If I could all, if you're in your car, that's fine. If you feel like you need to come stand outside your car, that's fine, but I'd like to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just take a few minutes to just give you a few guidelines for the town meeting. This is kind of an unusual town meeting. Many of you will be wearing masks. My wife gave me a white mask, but I put this black mask on because I felt this was a more formal event. If you're gonna be walking around, if you can wear masks, that'd be great. If you're in your cars and you don't have any problem with turning off your engine, not a bad idea. You may want to keep your windows open slightly if you are keeping your engine running. I have never had to say this before in a town meeting, but if you disagree with someone, please don't honk your horn. We don't want to hear horns honking today. So if you can just utilize your flags for voting, and if you'd like to speak to an article, you can come up to the front and take the microphone, and there will be, I understand, a roving microphone, so you can use the roving microphone as well. You can wave your hand to signal or stand out of your car and wave your hand if you'd like to speak to an article through the roving microphone. I'm gonna give you time if you'd like to speak to an article and come up to the front. Either way, we still want people to exchange ideas about the articles that we'll be taking up today. If you have an amendment to an article and you know what it is right now, it would be greatly appreciated if you could bring that amount, that article up to Liz Lufkin, so she can have that in her possession, and she can hand it to me, so I'm aware of it in advance. If you have, I'm gonna spend a lot, I'll leave enough time after I read an article to allow someone, if they want to make a procedural motion, they can do so. I'd appreciate it if you're gonna do that, if you'd come up either to, I actually would like that person who's gonna make a procedural motion to come up to the front, rather than look for a roving microphone. So any procedural motion, whether it be before or after an article, if you're gonna make that, please come up to the front. As far as limiting discussion, I'm going to allow as many people as we can to discuss articles today. Please address your comments to myself, the moderator. We don't want to have any back and forth, particularly under these current conditions, with regard to an article that you may agree with or disagree with. I just wanted to express my appreciation for all of you coming out today in such an unusual circumstance. I've never had anyone drive their car into a town meeting before. And it shows a lot of commitment on your part, and we appreciate it very much, and we hope that we can get the town's business done today in a way that everyone's safe, comfortable, and feel happy about fulfilling their civic responsibility. So without further ado, I'm going to read Articles 1 through 8. But before I, after Article 1, I will announce the election results. And then we'll allow the school moderator to allow the school election results. So Article 1, to choose all necessary town officials for the ensuing year. So for all of you who attended the March 10th Town Election, we had two candidates for Board of Selectmen for a period of three years, and those candidates were Stephen D'Angelo and Jeremy Craig Owens. Stephen D'Angelo received 284 votes. Jeremy Craig Owens received 334 votes. There were 29 write-ins. I declare Stephen D'Angelo and Jeremy Craig Owens elected. The Town Clerk/Tax Collector, there was one listed candidate, Elizabeth Lufkin. She received 394 votes. There were six write-ins. I declare Elizabeth Lufkin elected. Town Moderator, only one courageous person, Michael J. Scott. No write-ins. Oh, no, sorry, there were seven write-ins. Good. 386 votes. I declare Michael J. Scott elected. Town Treasurer, listed candidate, Rhonda Lampfier. She received 344 votes. There were 17 write-ins. I declare Rhonda Lampfier elected. Budget Committee, listed candidate, Paul Edward Murphy Jr. He received 354 votes. There were 14 write-ins. I declare Paul Edward Murphy Jr. elected. Budget Committee, for one year, there were three listed candidates, John E. Jack Cannon, Kathleen P. Gilmet, and Michael A. Wyder. Jack Cannon received 314 votes. Kathleen Gilmet received 320 votes. And Michael Wyder received 279 votes with 12 write-ins. I declare Jack Cannon, Kathleen Gilmet, and Michael Wyder elected. Okay. And I'm gonna allow the school moderator to list the elected officials for the school. So I'll go on to Library Trustee. Mary G. Jennings, 380 votes, no write-ins. I declare Mary Jennings elected. And that was for three years. For one-year library trustee, there were two listed. Ronald Petrie received 72 votes, and Beth Swanson received 322 votes. I declare Beth Swanson elected. Supervisor of the Checklist, Leslie G. Packard was listed candidate. She received 386 votes, and there was one write-in. I declare Leslie G. Packard elected. Trustee of the Trust Funds, okay, for that, Rhonda Lampfier received 13 write-in votes. She declined. Colin Costin received five write-in votes, and Dick Trask received four write-in votes. I declare Colin Costin elected. Welcome Towns and Trustee. Diana Sharon was the listed candidate. She received 385 votes. There was one write-in. I declare Diana Sharon elected. Great Hill Cemetery Trustee, listed candidate, Darrell F. Quinn, 398 votes, and there was one write-in. I declare Darrell F. Quinn elected. Village Cemetery Trustee, listed candidate, Aaron Mansour. He received 386 votes. There was one write-in. I declare Aaron Mansour elected. If I could invite the town school moderator, Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
You're welcome, Mr. Scott.
The results of the Chester School District Meeting. For a school board member, we had three listed candidates, Brennan Holmes with 228 votes, Dana Theakis with 226 votes, and Ann Pedlippany with 223 votes, and three write-ins. I declare Brennan Holmes and Dana Theakis as the winners. For school, yeah, sorry, I should pause. School District Clerk, we had one listed candidate, Robert Grimm with 368 votes, no write-ins. I declare Robert Grimm the elected candidate. For a school district moderator, there was one listed candidate, myself, David Scott. There was one write-in. David Scott had 377 votes. I declare David Scott the school district moderator. For school district treasurer, Rhonda Lampfier was the one listed candidate with 377 votes. There were 10 write-ins. I declare Rhonda Lampfier the school district treasurer. And with those results, I adjourn the school district meeting. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Okay. So we're now gonna take up the zoning articles that were voted on at the town election, and I will give you the results of those. So Article 2, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 1 to the town's zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board? Amending Article 4.5.2 parking lot requirements by amending subsection 4.5.2.2 and 4.5.2.5. The purpose was to change the wording, quote, "handicap," close quote, to "accessible," in quotes, and to update the reference to the federal and state regulations governing accessible parking. There were 286 yeses to Article 2 and 137 nos. Article 2 passes. Article 3, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 2 to the town's zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board? amend Article 4.9.2 Home Business by adding subsection 4.9.2.8. The purpose of the amendment is to allow for optional site plan review for some home business permit applications. There were 217 yeses to Article 3 and 199 nos. Article 3 passes. Article 4, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 3 to the town zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board? Article 5.3.5 Dimensional and Area Requirements. The purpose of the amendment was to add a simple cross-reference to Article 5.3.5, entitled Dimensional and Area Requirements, to subsection 5.7.5.2, entitled Lot Size Determinations, which is already existing. In response to Article 4, there were 196 votes in favor and 210 votes against. Article 4 failed. Article 5, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 4 to the town's zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board? amend Article 5.7.2 Definitions, and the purpose of it is to add a definition for basal area, in quotes, and amend the definition of no-clearing buffer zone. So in response to Article 5, there were 171 votes in favor and 238 votes against. Article 5 fails. Article 6, to eliminate the unit density incentive bonus for age-restricted housing and increase the unit density incentive bonus for workforce housing in order to help the town accomplish its fair share obligation to address the state's critical shortage of workforce housing. In response to Article 6, there were 292 yeses and there were 128 nos. Article 6 passes. Article 7, are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 6 to the town's zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board? amend Article 11.2.2.3, entitled Public Hearing and Notice, and the purpose of the amendment is to amend subsection 11.2.2.3 to extend the time period from 30 to 45 days for scheduling and administrative appeal hearing to comply with statutory changes to New Hampshire RSA 676:7, Roman numeral 2. So in response to Article 7, there were 232 votes in favor and 176 votes against. Article 7 passes. So Article, so I think I blew that, so, oh no, I went down to the last one. So Article 8, are you in favor of the adoption of Number 7, Amendment Number 7 to the town's zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board? The amendment is to Article 11.5 expiration of special exceptions and variants. The purpose is to provide expiration of unexercised special exceptions and variants approved prior to August 19, 2013, as amended by RSA 674-33, and RSA 674-33, that's RSA 674-33-1A parent B, and RSA 674-33, Roman numeral 4, parent C. There were 232 votes in favor and 176 votes against. Article 8 passes. So those are the zoning articles. So I'll just go through those, I'll just review what I just said with regard to those articles. So Article, so Article, Article 6, no, no, wait a second, one sec. So these are kind of funny, because they have Amendment 1, which is Article, so Article 2 is Amendment Number 1. It passed, 288 votes to 137. Article 3 is Amendment Number 2. It also passed, 217 votes to 199. Article 4 is Amendment Number 3. It passed, 254 votes to 153. Article 5 is Amendment 4. It failed, 196 yeses and 210 nos. Article 6 is Amendment Number 5. It failed, 171 yeses and 238 nos. Article 6, which is Amendment 5, this is what's confusing, 171 yeses and 238 nos. Article 7, which is Amendment Number 6, 292 yeses, 128 nos. It passed. And Article 8 is Amendment 7, 232 yeses, 176 nos. It passed. Hopefully we got, that's a bit confusing. But the articles did not line up with the amendment numbers. So now you have those results. We're gonna move on to Article 9. Now Article 9 is a road bond. This is by ballot vote. Each of you should have the ballots if you're properly registered. And so if you're properly registered, you have to actually complete a ballot, which will be collected from you. This article has to be open for one hour from this point. Does someone, what's the exact time right now? 9:18. So I'm gonna keep this open till 10:20. And I'm going to now read the article. It will be open till 10:20 to vote on. Article 9, passage of this article shall override the 10% limitation imposed on the appropriation due to the non-recommendation of the budget committee. Special warrant article, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $3 million for road improvements, and to authorize issuance of not more than $3 million of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, New Hampshire RSA 33, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rates of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, obtain, and accept any aid or funds from the state of New Hampshire, the federal government, and private sources, if any, as they may become available for said project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other action or pass any other vote relative thereto, and further to raise and appropriate $37,708.33 for the first year's interest payment. This article must pass by a 2/3 ballot vote. The estimated impact on your taxes is .05 dollars, for the first year only. The Board of Selectmen recommended this by 4 to 1 with no abstentions. The budget committee did not recommend this, as only one person agreed with it and five disagreed and zero abstained. I've read that article, let anyone move that to the floor. It's been moved and seconded. So you can now proceed to complete your ballot.
Hold on.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, we have someone to speak on it. And I didn't look that way, I thought they were coming up this way. Okay, so someone's here to speak on this.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to table this article.
Okay, so there's a procedural motion to table this article. So I have, yeah, so I have a second, I believe, from Rhonda, but I didn't see it.
We have one from here.
Okay, there's one over there, too. So I'm gonna have to really increase my peripheral vision. So it's been moved and seconded on a procedural motion that we table Article 9. So this doesn't require a ballot vote to table it, correct? Yeah. So what we're gonna do is, is if you have your flags and you wish to table this article, please indicate with your flag. Green?
Green.
Okay. So I'm just looking. Just get them all out, because I'm gonna wait a few minutes while everyone gets them And this is going to require a count, I can tell right now. Green is yes. Orange is no. Okay. I'm gonna need my people out there to count them, because I can't totally tell.
Yeah. Mr. Scott, can I explain why?
Uh, no. No discussion on procedural motions, sorry. Okay. I cannot, for the life of me, tell based on that. I've just got quite a few tabling votes up here.
Wow. Probably would've passed.
Okay. Why don't we do this? Why don't we, okay, I'm not being prejudicial, but all the nos, I want you to lower your flags, and just the yeses, keep their flags up. This is gonna make this a lot simpler. I've never done this before. There's a lot of things I haven't done before, but I have done this before. So can someone please go and count for me the green flags, including the ones up at these tables? And then, once you've counted them, please give that number to Andrew. Yeah, I'll just wait. So as soon as the parking lot's counted, then we want you to count up at the front here. So what's, so what was numbering, 95, the yeses? Okay. So the yeses were 93, and the nos are 38. Article 9 is tabled. I'll entertain a motion at this point, from Steph Lendo has made a motion that we waive a second reading of all articles from this point forward on the town warrant. Well, someone, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your green flag. Any opposed? Please raise your red flag. Okay, the Greens have it. So we're going to waive the second rereading, or the rereading of each article before the We're now-
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to give an explanation on that, please.
Okay. So there's been a request, and I'm permitted to do this, there's going to be an explanation as to why there is a motion to table Article 9. Go ahead.
Yeah, the reason I did this, the meeting has been delayed so long, we wouldn't be able to get funding for any roadwork until February. The bond banks close the 1st of July, so I didn't think it was fair to put this forward. I do plan to bring it back at next year's town meeting in March. I do apologize, but there's not a lot we can do. We're only allowed to get into the bond bank twice a year, and we've missed our window. So I hope that answers, you know, that answers why, answers your questions why I did it, and I really had no choice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. So now we're on to Article 10.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to take Article 21 out of order.
So there's been a motion to take Article 21 out of order. And Article 21 is the petition warrant, Article SB2. So it's been moved, seconded. I see a hand up there, we're seconding it. So it's been moved that we take Article 21 out of order, meaning that it would be the next article that I would read. All those in favor, please raise your green flag. Okay. Put your green flags back in. All those opposed, red flags. Greens have it. I will now read Article 21 out of order, and this is a 3 fifths ballot vote. So Article 21, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40:13, notice SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the legislative body of the Town of Chester on the second Tuesday of March? Again, this article must pass by a 3 fifths ballot vote. So I don't see any procedural motions, and I'm looking. So if you can please complete your ballots.
I'd like to speak to it.
Okay. I didn't see you, Steph. So Steph would like to speak to it. So before you complete your ballots, you may want to hear what Steph has to say.
Mike, I'm up here.
Okay, I'm, this is really bad, I can't see people. So, okay, so we have Steph first, and then we have Andrew. I don't know who got up first.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Is it on? Okay. First of all, I want to thank every one of you that took time to come to this meeting. You are people that are concerned with what your government does. We, as selectmen, and we as town officials, need to hear this. Unfortunately, in my mind, the wisdom of SB2 is not handled properly, because what it does is it allows people to come in and- Because what it does is it allows people to come in and just vote yes or no on everything. It doesn't allow for the open discussion that we're having here. You've shown up. You're interested, okay? You've made it a point so that we know where to go with this. At some point, I hope some of you are up here, and you will understand the frustration when you have something like the way SB two has been done. We did have SB two at one time in the school district, and we were one of the few towns that repealed it. And we did it because you people, the ones that are concerned, the ones that came, okay, made it a point that you wanted to be able to speak and debate on what is necessary, not just come in and check off a box and not understand a budget, not understand a warrant article, et cetera. I really hope that you understand that this is put in by some people that just want to shorten their time and do not want to do what is best for a democratic society. This is the purest form of government. I don't have to tell you that. When I moved up here many, many years ago from New York, and I saw a town meeting for the first time, and that's almost fifty years ago, I was amazed and I was marveled. And I wish and I hope that each and every one of you understand, not only what responsibility you took by coming out today, but what responsibility we have by being able to go ahead and voice your opinion. And I thank you very much for being here.
Andrew.
Okay, thank you. Andrew Haddock, one thirty-five Chester Street. As Steph noted, traditional town meeting format to vote on articles and expenditures is the purest form of government on the planet. The key reasons that I've heard touting to support SB two are, it saves town, and it allows more people to vote. It sounds great in theory, but most towns have learned that SB two has fatal flaws written into it. If you don't believe this, then go online and read some of the many articles about SB two, in The Concord Monitor, The Keen Sentinel, Nashua Telegraph, and others. Fatal flaw number one, under SB two, most voters don't really understand what they're voting on. And this is, this is in the record of many, many towns. This is because they didn't hear any of the discussions, as Steph noted. They didn't bother to attend either the public hearing or the deliberative session. Many towns with many thousands of registered voters are reporting that only a handful of voters are attending their public hearings and deliberative sessions. The undeniable fact is that most voters don't fulfill the first part of their duties by attending those hearings and sessions to become properly informed. They skip these meetings, generally under the excuse of convenience, and step badly uninformed into the voting booth. Fatal flaw number two, the very few people who do attend the deliberative sessions have undue influence over the process. Could somebody turn that down? For example, one New Hampshire town had a small turnout, and every dollar amount on their warrant was reduced to zero. No funding for fire, police, ambulance, anything. That didn't make any sense. And the sad fact of SB two, it turns out, is that it empowers the tyranny of the uninformed voter, who doesn't want to spend a little bit of time, once a year, to come to a traditional town meeting. Another example is the town of Epsom that voted down a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant just because they didn't understand what they were voting on. It's just proven to be a shortcut for apathetic voters around the meetings they really need to attend. And with fatal flaw number three, and this is something that nobody really talks about, is that the default budgets often end up being similar or even higher than the budget that is voted down. This is because the Budget Committee, and this is a flaw in SB two, is because the Budget Committee and the voters cannot amend the default budget. Unfortunately, the theory and the actual realities of SB two are miles apart, and there have been numerous efforts in Concord to fix this, and why it doesn't occur, I don't know, but it doesn't happen. Seventy-one towns municipalities have adopted SB two on the municipal side, and there have been sixty-seven attempts to rescind SB two, and only three attempts have been successful. In Chester, we have an elected and experienced and very effective Budget Committees. You voters get to pick these folks. As an employee, I can corroborate that the Budget Committee's effectiveness is there by their lack of popularity with a few department heads and a few selectmen. The system works. Please don't give up the most democratic system for something that just promises the illusion of cutting taxes and convenience. It ends up not turning out that way. Anybody who's involved in the process long enough understands that you end up spending more money in the end if a town is financially proactive instead of financially reactive. My analogy is like being a homeowner. If you ignore fixing that roof, you're not going to be just fixing the roof, you're going to be fixing the sheetrock and ceilings in the inside of your house, and your sills, and God knows what else. Many towns drank the Kool-Aid of SB two and then learned to their great dismay that their taxes still went up. Once enacted, SB two is almost impossible to rescind because of the same fatal flaws that keep it from working. So please do not fall into the trap of voting for SB two. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
On Article twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, thank you. Charlotte.
Charlotte, let's to Fremont Road.
There's no way to lower that microphone a bit more?
Well, I guess they can hear me.
Okay.
We had SB two for the school. What happened is, there was deliberative session, which is basically the meeting. You were obligated, if you passed this, to make it work by showing up at the meeting. It's part of your job. You show up at the meeting, and you know what's going on. And unfortunately, what happened, without the fact they were going to vote, people tended not to show up at the meeting. And it ended up without having at the meeting, and people didn't vote. We had fewer people voting for the school, at the school, than were going to the meeting. It would be more disastrous to do that for the town than for the school, because much of the school is by contract or law. We're going to lose a lot if we do this for the town. Anyone who votes for this, consider that you have decided that you're going to try to make it work by showing up at the deliberative session. If you're not willing to do that, please don't, because you need to know what's going on. You need to understand what's going on. We have the town meeting, and for anyone who can make it, I know why they put in SB two. Unfortunately, it caused more problems than the one we have now, which is some people are not able to make it to the town meeting. But unfortunately, the lack, that people do not go to the deliberative session and understand what's going on, the fact that fewer people vote leads to less voter participation. I strongly urge you to vote down this particular warrant article.
Okay, any further discussion? I can't see who people are with their mask on, so sorry. I apologize for not calling you by name, sorry.
Richard LeBlanc, Fremont Road.
I didn't know who that was. Go ahead, Richard.
I don't have all the statistics that Andrew had, but my experience with it in the past is it don't work, and it also causes a few people to be able to control everybody else. So the only thing I can add is, in my humble opinion, it didn't work then, it won't work now, so please vote this down. Thank you.
Okay, more discussion?
As you may know, many of our surrounding towns have already adopted an SB two form of meeting. SB two will increase opportunities to vote for Chester residents. All of our neighbors pay taxes, and they deserve every opportunity to make their voice heard. With an SB two form of meeting, we will keep the deliberative session, so voters will still be able to discuss important issues with their neighbors and families before voting. Residents that are unable to attend the deliberative session will be able to watch it on Chester Pack TV. The most important difference with SB two is that attendance to the deliberative session is not required in order to vote. With an SB two form of meeting, residents will be able to vote for all town warrant articles and officials on one town election day. The polls will be open for twelve hours, and votes will be cast in the privacy of a voting booth by secret ballot. The current process is exclusive, and everyone should have their chance to vote. Voting yes for SB two means that absentee ballots can be used for those who cannot attend, so military servicemen and women away on leave can still participate. The single mom working two jobs can vote, and so can the nurse who's working a twelve-hour shift. This is not a perfect solution, but the goal is to increase participation and give every taxpayer a voice. Vote yes for SB two.
Any more discussion? Go ahead.
Hi, Greg Bobbush, one twenty-four, Smith Road. I just want to propose a moment of silence right now for all the taxpayers in Chester who can't be here today. I think, just addressing a couple of comments I just heard, as far as what the purest form of government is, the purest form of government gives you your personal liberty, and my personal liberty is by secret ballot in the ballot box.
Okay, please, if you want to talk, you're welcome to, but don't interrupt this gentleman.
As far as tyranny of the uninformed voter, who makes the decision of what an uninformed voter is? I think, as far as personal liberty goes, that's my decision. That's nobody else's decision. Nobody can say I'm an uninformed voter. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Hello, Vicky Lussard, Jennifer Drive. On this day and age with computers and internet, you can have your voice heard and discuss your issues prior to a town meeting, and you can easily have that done prior to an actual vote, as in SB two. I want you to vote yes for SB two to prevent our taxes from increasing exponentially, because we cannot attend a town meeting. Participating in the deliberative deliberative session or during a town meeting is pretty much the same opportunity. You still have a chance to have your voice heard, and you can still rally for what you want with your signs, your online presence, half of what we're discussing today, I think we all read about online before we got here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rhonda Lamphier from the Budget Committee. I've been working on STB two for quite some time. I was instrumental in getting it reversed for the school when it did work here at the school. I have just listened to three voters talk about how great SB two was, and each one of them, if I had made a list, told you things that were inaccurate, okay? They were absolutely wrong. And no one is taking away the rights of the voters and residents of this town by keeping our town meeting traditional. And if you listen carefully to what Andrew said, SB two actually limits your rights, because you cannot amend that deliberative, excuse me, that alternative budget. You cannot amend that. So it's either the one that's presented that you can amend, or when everybody goes to the polls and doesn't really know what's going on, then they'll vote no, and you'll have that budget that was prepared by someone, not reviewed by the Budget Committee, not reviewed by the Department of Revenue, and that's what you will be stuck with. So I think it's really unfortunate if you take a lot of stock in what those three people just said, because there were a lot of inaccuracies. And with that, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call a question.
Well, you can, but there appear to be other people that want to discuss it behind you.
I didn't realize Bob was in line, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to pull this towards me. Bob Packett, Lane Road. For those who remembered, we did try SB, and it was horrible. Absolutely horrible. We were confused by it, we didn't get a good vote on it, and I don't think we got good representation on it. So I am dead against SB two. Thank you.
David, are you going to speak to it? Okay.
David Scott, three-ten Dairy Road. SB two, we have tried it with the school district. It didn't work. I don't want to go back. Thank you. Call the question.
Okay, so I don't see anyone near David, and the question's been called. So I don't need to reread this article, but I do need to tell you that you have in your packet a, I call it lavender, a lavender-colored ballot. That is the ballot for Article twenty-one. It takes three-fifths vote. Once you make your vote on that, hold your hand out the window, and someone is going to come around with a clear ballot box, so you can see what's going on, to collect them all, and then they're going to put it in the town's traditional ballot box, and we're going to count it. So I told, I misspoke last time when I said I was going to give you till ten twenty. What time do we have now? Okay, so I'm going to give you till ten fifty to vote. So the people that are here, or people who are listening on the radio, that want to drive their car up and pick up a packet and vote, they have an hour to do so. You can proceed to vote. Okay, so now that I see some of these ballots coming up to the front, I'm going to proceed with the rest of the articles on the warrant. Again, if your ballot has not been collected, wave the white flag. Article ten. Article ten, folks. Two new full-time firefighters. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars for the purpose of hiring and outfitting two full-time career firefighter EMTs, in order that the town may have coverage twelve hours a day, seven days a week. One-hundred-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is for wages. One-thousand-five-hundred dollars is for outfitting, and eighty-five dollars and seventy-four, eighty-four, sorry, eighty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars is for benefits. Okay, will someone move that article? It's been moved. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Chief? Anyone?
Hello, all. Thank you for coming out to town meeting. So I just want to go over how this came about, given the Board of Selectmen updates as to where we are. If you look across the country, you see national trends on volunteerism declining and that type of thing. We've watched a little bit of a decline here in town, trying to get ahead of it. We are not in a bad spot. We have a great group of volunteers who continue to answer the call. So when you start looking at everything, you've got to be prepared to move forward. At this time, we've been working with the call members, and they have asked that we table this for now. I will make the motion that we table this, and continue to work on it, to see what we can do to keep the small town, which is what we all want, but we also have to make sure we do what's right for your protection in the town. So at this time, I'd like to motion to table.
Okay, so the person that's behind you, I'm sorry, but we'll take up the procedural motion first. So there's been a motion to table- So there's been a motion to table Article 10. All those in favor, please wave your green flag. Okay? All those against, please raise up your red flag. Greens have it. Article 10 is tabled. Last gentleman, Chief was smart there. He talked about why he wanted to table it before he tabled it, because once you make a procedural motion, I'm disinclined to let you discuss it, so clever. Okay. Article 11. Steeple repair at Chester Congregational Church. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of helping defray the expense of structural work on the steeple of the Chester Congregational Church, which houses the town clock? The actual amount of said donation is to be conditioned upon the Congressional Church raising an equal amount of funding between town meeting of June, this is March 10, 2020, and town meeting of March 9, 2021. The amount donated will not exceed $25,000. So if someone wanted to amend that, they could do it right now. I'm going to leave it open. I was hoping to get amendments beforehand, but if you don't amend it, then you'll have less time, obviously, for the Congressional Church to obtain matching funds. Someone want to move that article to the table? Moved, seconded. Any discussion or emotions? Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Fran Bechtold, representing the Chester Congregational Baptist Church and the Meeting House Preservation Project. Warrant Article 11 is to help with repairs to the church steeple. Last year, the Meeting House Preservation Project Committee was formed and began fundraising to repair the inside and outside of the church building. An evaluation of the building's structure found that water leaking through the steeple is not only causing damage to the sanctuary ceiling, but also to the original support beams. The total estimated cost of repairs is at least $450,000, and more than half of that amount will be needed to repair the steeple and the support beams. The town owns the clock housed in the steeple, and even though the committee is applying for grants and church members and friends of the church have made generous pledges, we still need your help. The up to $25,000 proposed in this article will need to be matched by our continuing fundraising efforts. Work on the steeple will begin in April of 2021, and it is hoped that all building repairs will be completed in time for the town's 300th anniversary. Listed on the National Historic Registry, the church was built in 1773 and continues to be a part of our town's history and landscape. Your help and support are very much needed and appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think there's someone else here that wants to speak to it. Go ahead.
Good morning. I can see that the language in this particular article-
Please state your name, if you could, and your location.
Yep, no problem. Jeff Donopoulos, Jenkins Farm Road.
Thank you.
I see the language in the article references that the town's donation is going to be conditioned upon the Congressional Church raising an equal amount of the funding, and I'm simply wondering out loud a couple things. One of them is, probably already been answered, it sounds like the church has already started to raise that money, but I'm curious what happens if there isn't an equal amount raised by the Congressional Church and the town has raised $23,000. What happens to that money if it's not equally apportioned by the church? I yield the rest of my time.
Go ahead.
The Congressional Church, the Meeting House Preservation Committee, has to have new money donated that will be specifically towards matching funds from the town. So, for example, if we only raise $10,000, the town will only give us $10,000.
Any further discussion? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 11, please raise your green flag. Okay. Any opposed, please raise your red flag. Greens have it. Article 11 passes. Okay. Okay, Article 12. Optional tax credit for combat service. Shall the town adopt the optional tax credit for combat service per RSA Section 7228(c) in the amount of $500 per year? To qualify, a person shall be a resident of the town engaged in any point during the taxable period in combat service as a member of the New Hampshire National Guard or a reserve component of the United States Armed Services called to active duty. This credit would be in lieu of and not in addition to the standard and optional veterans' credits. The service member would be eligible for the credit in each tax year in which the combat service occurs. If passed, the credit would be effective as of April 1, 2020, which means, I assume, it would relate back. So, anyone want to move that article? And seconded? Yes, seconded. Okay, so, any discussion on Article 12? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. It's terrible, everything's... Go ahead.
I really just have one outstanding question here. It says that the credit would be in lieu of and not in addition to the standard and optional veterans' credits. I'm just wondering what those standard and optional veterans' credits amount to right now, because if we approve this, it's possible that our deserving veterans might lose out on the credits that they deserve. So I just want to make sure that it's not a losing proposition for the veterans if the town decides to approve this.
Okay. I'm sorry, you can ask questions, but you may not get them answered.
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Jean Packard, Assessing Department.
Thank you.
The standard veterans' credit is $750 yearly. The disabled veteran, 100% disabled veteran, is $4,000 a year. This combat service would be while on active duty, which right now, they don't get any kind of credit, and it would be $500 a year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this article? There appearing to be none. All in favor of Article 12, please raise your green flags. Okay, any opposed? Red flags? Okay, the greens have it. Article 12 carries. Article 13. Established PACT revolving fund. Shall the town vote to establish a revolving fund pursuant to RSA 31, Section 3195h, for the purpose of funding the Town of Chester's public access community television-related costs and to enable purchase of cable TV equipment, as may be approved from time to time by the governing board, and to raise and appropriate from the town's unassigned fund balance the amount of $45,453 for deposited into said revolving fund? This sum is to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2020, and no amount to be raised by taxation. All future revenues received from cable franchise fees shall be deposited into the revolving fund for the public access cable television fund, and money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall be considered to be part of the general fund and assigned, unassigned, fund balance. The treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay over the same only upon order of the PACT Committee and Board of Selectmen, and no further legislative body approval is required to expend. These funds may be expended only for the purpose of providing public, educational, and governmental access television. A ballot vote is required in this circumstance. If this passes, warrant Article 15 shall be tabled, and I believe I'm going to get a motion to table this.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Bob Grim, 173 Lane Road, PACT Chair. I'd like to table Article 13.
Yes, so it's been moved that we table Article 13. All those in favor, please signify with a green flag. Okay. All those against, please put up a red flag. Greens have it. The Article 13 is tabled. Article 14. Rescind PACT special revenue fund. Special warrant article. Shall the town vote to rescind the provisions of RSA Section 3195(c) to restrict 100% of revenues from the cable franchise fees paid by Comcast under the cable television renewal franchise between Comcast and the Town of Chester to expenditures for the purpose of providing public, educational, and governmental access television in the Town of Chester? This article must pass by a two-thirds ballot vote. If Article 13 does not pass, this article shall be tabled. Anyone want to move that to the floor?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah. Incidentally, the previous article I saw was moved and seconded. I believe we're going to get another procedural motion here.
Yep. Bob Grim, 173 Lane Road, still. I'd like to table Article 14, please.
Okay, so it's been moved that Article 14 is read, be tabled. All those in favor, please raise your green flags. Okay, any opposed? Please raise your red flag. The greens have it. So Article 14 is tabled. Oh, I just received this. If you need water or any other type of assistance, raise your white flag, and someone will come by with bottled water. Okay, thank you. We're now on Article 15. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $36,925 for the purpose of providing public, educational, and governmental access television in the Town of Chester? Said funds to be withdrawn from the special revenue fund known as PACT fund established at the 2003 town meeting, separate from the general fund and funded by Comcast subscribers in the Town of Chester. If passed, this article will have no tax impact. If Article 13 passes, this article shall be tabled. And just to explain, Article 13 was tabled, so it can't pass. Will someone move Article 15 to the... It's moved, seconded? Any discussion on Article 15? Okay, there appearing to be no discussion on Article 15. All those in favor, please signify with a green flag. Okay. Any opposed? Please raise a red flag. Greens have it. Article 15 passes. Okay, Article 16. Budget. Shall the town raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended amount of $4,998,655 for the operating budget, for the support of town government, for the payment of salaries, and for the payment of statutory obligations of the town? Tally vote, six yeses, zero no, zero abstain. The Board of Selectmen recommends $4,998,655 by tally vote of five yeses, zero noes, zero abstentions. This article does not include appropriations voted in today on other warrant articles. Okay, I will just go through the summary here. General Government, $2,215,913 by the Board of Selectmen, $2,215,913 by the Budget Committee. Public Safety, $1,420,30 for the Board of Selectmen, $1,420,30 for, $20,30 for the Budget Committee. Highway, Streets, Bridges, $758,823 for the Board of Selectmen, $758,823 by the Budget Committee. Sanitation, $218,638 for the Board of Selectmen, $218,638 for the Budget Committee. Health and Welfare, $42,212 for the Board of Selectmen, $289,812 for the Budget Committee. Conservation and Economic Development, $1,205 for the Board of Selectmen, $1,205 for the Budget Committee. Debt Service, $52,022 for the Board of Selectmen, $52,022 for the Budget Committee, and the total appropriation lines up, $4,998,655 for the Board of Selectmen, $4,998,655 for the Budget Committee. Wow. So, anyone want to move that article to the floor? Moved, seconded. Thank you. Discussion on the Town Budget. Anyone want to discuss that? I am not seeing anyone showing up to a microphone, and I don't see anyone rushing to anyone with a microphone. There being no discussion, I would like to put this up for a vote. All those in favor of Article 16, please signify with a green flag. Keep them up. Any opposed with a red flag? Okay. Okay, the greens have it. Article 16 passes. Okay, Article 17 is a special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 to be added to the Capital Reserve Fund known as the Town's Municipal Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Reserve Fund, established at the 2013 town meeting? And the Board of Selectmen vote is four to zero and one abstention, and the Budget Committee is six to zero and no abstentions. Will someone move Article 17 to the table? Moved? And? Seconded? Seconded. Okay, any discussion on Article 17? Okay, I'm going to leave some time. I don't see anyone getting a microphone. Any discussion? No. All those in favor of Article 17, please signify with a green flag. All opposed? Red flag. Okay, green flags, put them back up again, please. Keep the red flags up. Keep the red flags up. Keep the green flags up. Okay, we're going to have to count that. Even though I see these... Wait a second, let me just take a look. Just let me scan everything. Okay, I'm going to make a call as the moderator. The greens have it. If someone wants to oppose that reading, they would have to come up here and make a motion to overturn me. I don't see it. Article 17 passes. Article 18. CIP Projects. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $784,205 for the following projects: library computer upgrades, PACT, police department, fire department, fire department... Let me just get back to this. Library computer upgrades, PACT equipment upgrades, police department evidence room ventilation, fire department radios, fire department personal protective equipment, highway department asphalt hotbox, highway department surveying and engineering services, highway department roadwork, building department zero-turn gas lawnmower, and withdraw $784,205 from the Municipal Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund created for these purposes. There are five selectmen that said yes with no abstentions, and there were six Budget Committee members that said yes with no abstentions. Will someone move Article 18 to the floor?
Still moved.
Seconded? Seconded. Okay, any discussion on Article 18?
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
I'd like to make an amendment to Article 18.
If someone also could put that in writing and bring it up to the front, but that's fantastic, I'm going to come down... Can someone just grab that from and pick it up and pass it to me? Can someone just grab that from and pick it up and pass it to me? And then I will subsequently pass that to you, Liz, after I finish. Okay, Rhonda, why don't you go ahead and read that amendment?
Okay. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $784,205 for the following projects: Library Computer Upgrades, $7,600; PACT Equipment Upgrades, $24,590; Police Department Evidence Room Ventilation, $6,000; Fire Department Radios, $69,000; Fire Department Personal Protective Equipment, $16,415; Highway Department Asphalt Hot Box, $35,000; Highway Department Surveying and Engineering, $10,000; Highway Department Roadwork, $600,000; Building Department Zero Turn Gas Lawnmower, $15,600, and withdraw $784,205 from the Municipal Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund created for these purposes.
Okay, so there has been amendment, it's been moved, anyone want to second that?
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, I'd like to speak to it, Mr. Moderator?
Sure, go ahead, Rhonda.
The Budget Committee discussed this, and it wasn't clear to us why the amounts for each category were not stated in the warrant article. We felt that by taking these amounts out of the warrant, off of the warrant article, it did not give the voters an opportunity to know how much was being spent in each category or to amend the warrant article. So therefore, we've made an amendment to put it back in.
Thank you.
And then I have one other comment, I'm thinking this might be an error, but I'm just going to bring it up. On the bottom one where it says Building Department, I always thought Building Department was the Building Inspector. Should that say General Buildings?
Municipal.
So it should say Municipal Buildings and Maintenance, so somehow, we probably need to make that correction.
Okay, so this is not an amendment to the amendment, this is what you actually want in the amendment, correct?
I've -- we've only added these amounts, we have not changed them.
No, but you want me to change this one category on the amendment?
That would be up to the selectmen, I believe.
Well, who's offering the amendment?
Do you want me to make a second amendment?
No, you don't have to, you just have to tell me what the amendment's going to say on that one line. Municipal.
I think it should change General Government Buildings, shouldn't it? Isn't that where Maintenance, the category Maintenance is in?
I don't know.
Steph, this is your department, could you?
We're getting a nod.
Yeah, okay.
So, General?
It doesn't require an amendment.
Well, I'm just going to put it on the amendment, so I can read the amendment again and have its vote on it. So, General Building Maintenance?
I don't agree with you, Steph, only because General Government Buildings does not have an appropriation in this warrant article, so.
It doesn't require an amendment, yes, it's right.
Well, just change the category on your initial amendment. General Government Buildings. General Government Buildings? Is that what you want, Rhonda?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, any further discussion on the amendment?
Yes, Andrew Haddock, 135 Chester Street. I didn't know they were going to speak to this. First of all, Rhonda is correct. If you use the General Government Buildings, you're in line with the impact fee structure and the account name, just a clarification. I too also feel that this article should have included the amounts under the individual categories for full disclosure purposes. I know the RSA does not require the selectmen to put it in there, but I think it would be a better form to include those amounts as we have in the past, just so that the public knows, the voters know, what they're voting for under each category. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mike Weider from the Budget Committee, 80 Red Square Lane. So, all I'm going to speak to this warrant article is that this has been going on for a few years.
Well, first of all, you should be speaking to the amendment, are you speaking to the warrant article or the amendment?
The amendment, that's fine. To the amendment. This is a process that the town's been doing for the last seven years, eight years. It works. It's supposed to speed up our meetings. We shouldn't see a lot of warrant articles. This was an odd year, a lot of warrant articles were added for funding. In the future, if we want to add articles or add money to certain projects like highway work or other kind of projects, they should be brought into the CIP and not separate warrant articles. Because the CIP is a method for funding that this town has accepted and has moved forward with for the last seven to eight years. With that, we understand the costs associated with it, and we're not paying interest and interest rates, bond fees, attorney fees, to enact bonds and other types of loans. The town has saved hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing the CIP, funding it to the levels that we've been funding, and moving it forward to the legislative body with the articles inside, with the description of the article and the cost of those articles. You, the legislative body, have the right to amend, change, or add at any time based on what has been recommended to the CIP. Please continue to support the CIP, the amendment to the CIP, in this format. It helps you, the legislative body, understand where your money is going to, and also helps the town be fiscally responsible. At the end of the day, we don't want to pay interest to things when we can fund it. If we think we want projects that we want to move forward, large projects, think about those costs and add it to the CIP. Do your amendments to the CIP, those are the things we can do at these meetings. Thank you, Michael.
Further comment or discussion?
My name is Craig Roby, and I live at 87 Chester Street, and I was just interested in the Building Department, not the building, but the Road Department, where it's asking for $600,000. I was just trying to get clarification on who is responsible for that money. It doesn't lead us to any understanding of what would be done with the money. Just, it just seems like a big number just to, at free will, spend where you want. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike, did you want to talk, Mike? Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roby. I have a set of plans for North Pond Road from 102 to the Second Orchid, and that is being funded this year through CIP. I'm hoping that you will approve our funds, so we can at least repair that section of roadway. I have the plans here if anybody is interested in looking at them, but that's where I plan to spend your money this year. Like last year, we had funds for East Erie Road and Reed Road. We had a little bit of extra, so we did some work on Fremont, we did some work on Harantis, and we also did work on Candia Road. So what I'm trying to do is major projects with this money, and then spread the extra around to try to make it a little more palatable for you folks all over town. But that's where your money's going this year. Thank you.
Okay, doesn't appear to be further discussion on the amendment. I will now have his vote of the amendment. All in favor of the amendment as read by Rhonda? Green flags, any opposed, please signify with red flags. Greens have it. Article 18 is amended. Any discussion on the article as amended? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 18 as amended, please signify with a green flag, and opposed with red flags. Okay, the greens have it. Article 18 is amended, carries. Okay, we're now on Article 19. Highway CIP Funding. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $751,365 to be added to the Capital Reserve Fund, known as the Highway Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund, established at the 2015 town meeting, with $151,365, which is the anticipated grant amount this year from the New Hampshire Highway Block Grant, to be used to offset this appropriation, and the remaining $600,000 to be raised through taxation. The estimated property tax impact is 84 cents. And the selectmen vote five to zero with no abstentions, the Budget Committee votes six to zero with no abstentions. Anyone want to move that article? It's moved, so moved, seconded? Seconded. Any discussion on Article 19?
Again, these funds will be spent towards the North Pond Road project and anything else that we could get done in this season.
Okay, any further discussion? I don't see anybody standing or walking towards a microphone. I'll put it up for a vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please signify with a green flag. All opposed, red flag. Okay, the greens have it. Article 19 passes. Article 20. Highway CIP Projects. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $751,365 for roadwork in the Town of Chester and withdraw $751,365 from Highway Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund created for these purposes. The tax impact will be zero, the selectmen vote five to zero with no abstentions, and the Budget Committee are in favor, six to zero, no abstentions. Move that to the floor, please. Yes, it's moved, seconded? Seconded? Seconded. Any discussion on Article 20?
Again, more roadwork, same area, and we'll be very frugal with your money.
Any further discussion? There appearing to be none, all those in favor of Article 20, please signify? Okay, all opposed, red flags? Okay, the greens have it. Article 20 passes. 300th Anniversary. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to the Capital Reserve Fund, known as the 300th Anniversary Celebration Capital Reserve Fund, established at the 2013 town meeting? Selectmen recommended this five to zero, no abstentions, and the Budget Committee recommended it six to zero with no abstentions. Someone move that article to the floor? Seconded? Okay, any discussion on Article 22?
Rhonda Laffier, the 300th Committee, I don't know if our chairman, Jean Method, is here today or not, but I just want to tell you quickly, we're now about two years away from our 300th celebration. We're actively working on different projects that'll be taking place that year. We're going to be looking for many volunteers, many, many. We're going to have a very big parade, we're going to have a proclamation that's going to take place in May of '21. There's a lot going to be going on. We meet monthly, we have been meeting on Mondays, but we are going to be changing our meeting nights, so please check the website. And we welcome anybody to come and offer help, just ask us questions, so they'll be informed on what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on warrant Article 22? There appearing to be none. All those in favor, please signify with a green flag. All opposed, with a red flag. Greens have it. Article 22 carries. Article 23. Roadside Tree Removal. This is a special warrant article. Shall the town vote to establish an expendable trust fund under the provisions of RSA 3119a to be known as the roadside tree removal fund, for the removal of any roadside trees or portion thereof in the town's easement, which is a public safety hazard and a danger to the residents of the community? And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in this fund, and further, to appoint the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this fund. Okay, so that's a seven cent impact on your taxes, and the vote tally is four to zero for the selectmen with one abstention, and the Budget Committee is zero to five, meaning against, with one abstention. Anyone want to move Article 23? It's moved, seconded? Seconded? They're seconded, okay. Any discussion on Article 23?
Yes, I brought this up, we had a lot of trees in the road that we, really expensive trees to be removed, but we've come up with a different way to fund it, and I would like to table this article, please.
Okay, so there's a procedural motion to table Article 23, and it's been seconded. All in favor, please signify the green flag to table this article. All against, signify with a red flag. Greens have it. Article 23 is tabled. Article 24. Ortho Rectifying Maps. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of ortho rectifying our town tax maps? This sounds like they're doing a medical procedure on them. This will align, rectify flat property lines with the topography of the land to fully utilize the town's new GIS mapping system. The impact is two cents on the taxes, and the selectmen are four in favor, zero against, and one abstention, and the Budget Committee is one in favor, five against, no abstention. Anyone want to move Article 24 to the table? Moved, seconded? Thank you. Okay, any discussion on Article 24?
Yes.
Andrew, thank you.
Andrew Haddock, 135 Chester Street. Chester's one of the last towns in this area to get graphic information or GIS available to the public on the town's website, and it's extremely useful tool for homeowners, for the building inspector, for conservation commissions, or anybody who wants to learn about their town. The problem right now is that the aerial photo maps that come up in the mapping system have not been ortho-rectified, they've not been corrected for the fact that the camera took some of the picture at an angle, that the ground topography is not flat as a pool table moves up and down. I'm told that this is a one-time cost, and it'll end up being a very useful tool for you guys, like when you're wondering, you go into the building inspector's office and you want to put in a pool or a deck or whatever, and he says, "Well, I don't know how far you are from your side lot line or from your rear lot line, you know, or your structural setback. I need you to go get a certified plot plan," which by the way, is going to cost you multiple thousands of dollars. And this will help a lot, specifically in that instance. He'll be able to take a look at that, understand immediately, you know, because it'll show your lot lines correctly in relation to your house, and he can waive that requirement for that plot plan. And it'll also answer many of the calls that I receive where people are going, "Well, I have no idea how far back my lot goes. Does it go across the creek, or does it stop on this side of the creek?" And you will find that it's a very useful tool, and all the towns that surround us have this. So, I ask you to vote in favor of this article. Again, it's a one-time cost, is what I'm told.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 24? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 24, please raise your green flags. And, okay. All opposed, raise your red flags. Everyone just keep their flags up, red and green. Oh, boy. The greens have it. Okay, Article 25. Winter Road Maintenance Fund. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $105,000 to be added to the expendable trust fund, known as the Winter Road Maintenance Fund, established in the 2006 town meeting and increased at the 2017 town meeting, for the purpose of plowing, salting, sanding, and general winter road maintenance in the Town of Chester. The Winter Road Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund shall not exceed $105,000. This is a 15-cent tax impact, five of the selectmen in favor, zero abstentions, five of the Budget Committee in favor, one abstention. Will someone move Article 25 to the floor? Moved and seconded? Very good. So-- So, any discussion on Article 25?
As you all know, we had a fairly easy winter, and we're not going to need these funds, so I again would like to table this.
Okay. There's been a motion to table Article 25. All in favor, please signify with your green flag. Any opposed with a red flag? Okay. Greens have it. Article 25 is tabled. Article 26. Town Master Plan Capital Reserve Fund. This is a special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be added to the Town Master Plan Capital Reserve Fund, established at the 2019 town meeting? Tax impact, three cents. Selectmen, five in favor, zero abstentions. And the budget committee, six in favor, zero abstentions. Anyone want to move Article 26? Moved? Seconded? Thank you. Okay, so Article 26, any discussion on that?
Yes. Andrew Haddock, 135 Chester Street. Under RSA 674:21, the purpose of the master plan is to set down and clearly as practically possible the best and appropriate future development in Chester under the planning board, to aid in designing ordinances, preserving and enhancing the unique quality of life and culture of Chester, and to guide the planning board in the performance of its other duties in a manner that achieves the principles of smart growth, sound planning, and wise resource protection. One of the big questions is, why is the master plan a legal necessity? Well, under RSA 674:1, number one, it is a duty of every planning board established under the RSA 673:1 to prepare and amend the master plan from time to time. So if a town wants to have a capital improvement plan, you've got to have a master plan, and you've got to keep it up to date. If you want a major plan for streets and parks, you've got to have a master plan that's up to date. If you want to adopt a new zoning ordinance, you've got to have that master plan. And you need it for any innovative land use controls, such as being able to collect impact fees, being able to require a developer to phase his developments instead of building them all at once, to allow for open space developments, and to have a growth management ordinance. And believe me, if you've been around through a couple of the boom cycles, you really needed phasing of developments. You needed a growth management ordinance. I don't know how many of you guys remember the crazy times in the early thousands and before that in the late 90s, and before that in the late 80s. But we got hit with so much growth, our infrastructure couldn't hold it. And this building behind me is proof that things happen very rapidly depending on the economic circumstances. Next, how often must the master plan be updated and revised? They recommend every five to two years in the RSA. Our last update was done over 2014 and '15. It's not a simple project process. It has a lot of metrics in it, and a lot of statistics that have to be incorporated. The next update is proposed for 2021, 2022. And the good thing about this is it's going to reflect the 2020 census, which is the first time in a long time that a master plan update has been within a close proximity to a census, which is the most accurate count we get. The process requires significant citizen input to update the future vision for our community. And I hope as many of you participate in that as possible when the time comes. And lastly, we're funding this cost incrementally so it doesn't hit you all in a single year. Like many other projects we do, we have capital reserve funds. The previous update cost was $50,000, and we don't want this to hit us in a single year. So that's the reason for this amount this year. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 26? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 26, please signify with your green flag. All opposed, red flags? Okay, greens have it. So Article 26 passes. Article 27. Historic Building Capital Reserve Fund. This is a special warrant article. Shall the town vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 35 in order to fund the repair and restoration of town historic buildings and to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be placed in this fund? Further, to authorize transfer of $50,000 from the June 30, 2020 unassigned fund balance and $50,000 from any surplus remaining from the fiscal year 2019 to 2020 for this purpose, with no amount to be raised from taxation? Further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend any grants for these projects that may be available? Further, to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this fund? It's going to have a zero tax impact, and the selectmen are five in favor, zero against, no abstentions. The budget committee is six in favor and no abstentions. Will someone move Article 27? Moved? Seconded? Thank you. Okay. So any discussion on Article 27? Go ahead, Steph.
Sorry about that. I'm not too technologically handled. The purpose of this article is to raise funds without taxation, so this is money that we've already appropriated. You and I have paid in in our taxes. And it basically is to repair some of the older buildings. As many of you may not be aware, we have about 106 different structures in town, of which several of them are major buildings and are older. This town never had a town hall until it was given to us by Mr. Stevens. And that was approximately 100 years ago, maybe 110. Beforehand, we used the church as the meeting house. This building has had some issues with the paint, and we thought at one time it was because of it was balloon-framed. We've had one or two people take a look at it, and apparently there is some issues with the fascia boards and a portion of the roof. The roof itself is slate, and the problem is at the very end. The purpose of this article is so that we could go ahead and use the monies that you've already put in, okay, into your taxes. That's why there's no tax impact other than the fact that we're taking it from the prior taxes you paid to go ahead and do repairs on this building. And we want to do it in time for the 300th anniversary, but we also want to do it because there are a number of reasons for that building. It houses our historical society. It has an auditorium, as you well know, upstairs, that is used. In fact, this is one building that is used probably every day of the week. And we'd like to continue to make use out of it. The only time it's been quiet has been now since we've had this COVID-19 issue. I would ask you, please, I would urge you, please vote for this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 27? There appearing to be none. All those in favor, please signify. And all opposed, please signify? Okay. Article 27 passes. Article 28. Transportation Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. Shall the town vote to adopt the provisions of RSA Section 261153 Roman numeral 6 to collect an additional fee of a maximum of $5 for the purpose of supporting a municipal and transportation improvement fund, which shall be deposited into a capital reserve fund established for the purpose of supporting town transportation improvement? And shall the town authorize establishment of this capital reserve fund, pursuant to RSA Chapter 35, to be known as the Transportation Improvement Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of funding said improvements? And further, to appoint the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this fund? A ballot vote is required. Zero tax impact. Five selectmen in favor, zero abstentions. Zero budget committees in favor, five against, and one abstention. Anyone want to move Article 28 to the floor? Moved? Seconded? Thank you. Discussion?
Liz Lufkin, 39 Chester Street. I would like to make a motion to table this article.
Okay, so there's been a motion to table Article 28. All those in favor of tabling Article 28, please signify. Any opposed? The article is tabled. Article 29. Great Hill Cemetery Maintenance Fund. Oh, yeah, we're past 10:50, right? I'm sorry. Okay, so we have one minute, two minutes left. So I'll call this, right after I read this article and we do it, we'll be done. So those of you who are at home, if you're listening to this, you're probably too late to vote on the SPA. Okay, SB 2, Article 21. Anyway, back to Article 29. Great Hill Cemetery Maintenance Fund. Shall the town vote to establish a trust fund under the provisions of RSA Section 3119A and RSA Section 2892A, to be known as the Great Hill Cemetery Maintenance and Expansion Fund, for the general maintenance and capital expansion of said cemetery, and to raise and appropriate $1 to be placed in this fund? And further, to appoint the Great Hill Cemetery Board of Trustees or Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this fund? Zero tax impact. Five selectmen in favor. Zero abstentions. One budget committee member in favor, five against, and zero abstentions. Anyone want to move Article 29 to the floor?
So moved.
Seconded, too. I see it seconded. Thank you. Go ahead. And there's an amendment.
Mr. Bauter, I'd like to amend Article 29.
Okay. Why don't you read that amendment, Dorian? Rhonda?
I'd like to amend 29. Shall the town vote to establish a trust fund under the provisions of RSA 3119-A and RSA 289:2-A to be known as the Great Hill Cemetery Maintenance and Expansion Fund, for the general maintenance and capital expansion of said cemetery? And to raise and appropriate $1 to be placed in this fund? And further, to appropriate Great Hill Cemetery Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend the fund?
Okay. So if I understand this correctly, you're adding, the big addition here is you're just adding the Board of Trustees from the Great Hill Cemetery as the ones that have discretion over this?
It's a procedural, yes. The Board of Selectmen should also be approving this.
So any further discussion on that amendment, or did I kind of describe it?
You've got it.
Okay. So all those in favor of the amendment on Article 29, please signify by raising your green flag. All opposed with a red flag. Greens have it. Article 29 is amended to add as the appointment of Great Hill Cemetery Board of Trustees, having, okay, so that and the selectmen.
Mr. Bauter?
Yep.
At the request of the Great Hill Cemetery Trustees, I'd like to make a motion to table this article.
Okay. So now that we have the amendment, we're going to table the article as amended. All those in favor of tabling Article 29 as amended, please signify? All opposed? Okay, it's tabled. Okay. Article 30. Historical Document Digitization. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $11,500 for the purpose of beginning the digitization of the town's historical records collection? And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend any grants for this project that may be available? Two cents impact on your taxes. Five selectmen are in favor, zero abstentions. Six budget committee members are in favor, zero abstentions. Anyone want to move that article? Okay, Article 30 is under consideration. Any discussion on that article? Okay. I don't see anyone coming up. I don't see one discussing it. All those in favor of Article 30 as read, please signify by green flag. All opposed, by red flag. Greens have it. Article 30 passes. Before I read, okay, so Article 31, Petition Warrant Article. Pardon me? Oh, sorry, yes. And so Article 21 is now closed. And so I don't know if we have tally on that or not. We're still counting? Okay, that's right. So now we're going to count that vote. Okay, so let me ask this. I know this is kind of crazy, but wave your white flag as a moment of truce if you haven't had your ballot picked up and you're angry. I don't see any white flag. Oh, there's a white flag! Holy, is that fake? A fake white? That's a real one. Can someone go get that? Okay. And that could be other people. May I say that jokingly? But there's probably, could be people that came in last minute and haven't had their ballot picked up. Anyone else? Just wave your white flag up there, because I don't know if you're just waving at me. Okay, there's two people. It looks two. Did we get those? Anyone else? Okay, there's someone at the back there waving.